Everybody's in a chat. Chatting mode. All right. Good evening, everyone. Okay, we're gonna get started. Travis, are you ready? All right, great, thank you. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our work session for Monday, October 13th. It's 5:31, so we'll get started. Roll call, please.
Mayor Garachano.
President.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Nian. Councilmember Ottenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Tradier.
Here.
Councilmember Mabry.
Here.
Councilmember Robuski.
Here.
Councilmember Preston. Councilmember Marshall.
President.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Rambo.
Here.
Councilmember Bacher. Councilmember Crans.
Here.
Councilmember Vanek.
Here.
Councilmember Albers. Councilmember Galani.
Here.
Comments and announcements, I do not have any at this time. So we'll go into the for information section of the agenda, and as we do, I'll pause right now just to see if anyone has any questions regarding any item listed under for information. If you do, please make sure to raise your hand. Councilmember Dogwell.
Just real quickly, the presentation by Phil Blone on the Storm Management Master Plan, are we going to take some of those things and work them into the 2026 budget from that committee?
City Administrator, go ahead.
Yes, at this time, and this will be distributed to council shortly, there is some money set aside in the Capital Improvement Sales Tax Fund to start knocking off some of those items. And that said, we do not have that anticipated revenue of the $300,000. We don't have the specifics yet, so that is not included in the budget because we don't have it just yet. But come next year, if we're at this time and that money becomes available and there's that easy process to be able to get it done, that could easily be worked into a mid-year, and I'm assuming there would probably have to be a new account or fund set up to be able to process those funds. But there are money set aside for watershed.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have anything under for information? Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yeah, I was a little confused about the consideration of the stay on historic assets. So does that mean that any current or previous requests are going to be held up? Are those going to move forward and then we're going to, if this passes, then we'll start from that point on?
Cutchon, I believe that's under for action, so I'll be glad to answer your question when we get to that point in the agenda. Thank you for the question.
Great. Anyone else has anything for information? All right, certainly, we can come back to this under miscellaneous if you do have any other questions. So let's move into for action. We have, let's see, first item, the Wildwood Celebration Commission Discussion of the Proposed Budget for the 2026 Event with Recommendation. Director Vunich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, as you know, approximately one month ago, we completed the Celebrate Wildwood event, our 30th anniversary. As part of that event, there is a commission that's made up of volunteers from each of our wards along with a council liaison and our superintendent of Parks and Recreation. Each year, at the conclusion of the event, we meet and we talk about the positives, the negatives, things we can improve, things that went very well. Under the code that established the commission, they are required to present to City Council before the end of October a proposed budget for the upcoming event in 2026. It's mandated by the code, and we do have generally most of the expenditures to help us with making a recommendation to City Council. The Wildwood Celebration Commission also provided to you a list of expenditures from the 2025 event. As you can see, we were a little over in terms of the amount, but it was clearly offset by the sponsorships, fees and charges, and other in-kind gifts that were received. In total, the city received approximately $42,000 in those items, spent the amount that has been identified, approximately $116,000. And so we ended up spending collectively about $80,000 of that budgeted amount that we started with in 2025. The Celebration Commission is submitting for your consideration tonight a budget of $95,000 for the upcoming event in 2026. That amount is identical to 2025, which was $5,000 more than 2024. The rationale for the increase between the event in 2024 and the event in 2025 related to the 30th anniversary, knowing we wanted to do special things to recognize the city on this milestone. The commission thought keeping that amount was appropriate, since we are going to move to our new venue finally, which is Village Green. Not knowing how Village Green will lay out and all of the components, the pluses, the minuses, the commission members thought that it'd be best that we hold the budget at the amount of 2025 in the event that there are certain things we need to do to make Village Green the best venue it can be. In summary, you have before you a recommendation from the Wildwood Celebration Commission for the 2026 budget, and it's to $95,000. As you know, we'll be going into the budget process tonight and from this point forward, and this item doesn't necessarily need action tonight, but it's being presented to you per the code. Thank you.
Do we have any questions or comments? Otherwise, Councilmember Ottenberg.
Director Vunich, just real quick, would you mind repeating the recommended budget for next year?
$95,000.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Can you make sure you put into the budget for next year whatever we need to do to replace the grass that's in the green part of it? Because we're used to using a pretty low-grade field for our activities, and that's not going to be there. And if we're going to have a nice Village Green, we're going to have to look at including reseeding or something with the amount of foot traffic that's going to be coming through.
It's certainly a great suggestion, and we'll have it as a component of the discussion with the commission members. Interestingly, Go Green, which is the primary provider of services in our parks and along our trail corridors, is a major sponsor. So maybe we can do some in-kind there and have him fix the oval and do it as part of his sponsorship. So we'll see. But thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise, or motion? Councilmember Dodwell. Okay, and we need a second on that. Councilmember Bacher. All right, any other discussion on the motion on the floor? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose or abstain? Right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, we have Item B under the Department of Planning, the consideration of stay on all demolition of historic assets while the historic preservation plan is completed. Director Vunich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, if you've been tracking the progress of certain items before our Historic Preservation Commission, some of those of recent times have been requested by property owners for the demolition of certain historic assets that for all intents and purposes are irreplaceable, but also a great loss to the larger community. One example is the Mary Cliff Residence at LaSalle Institute. It was a building that had been on location for 125-plus years. All in all, when the Historic Preservation Commission visited the location, found the residence to be in excellent shape, except for the interior damage the LaSalle Institute had done in pre-steps prior to demolition. Ultimately, after a year of working with the attorney that represents the province, the demolition did occur. Prior to that, the JP Connell House, which is located on St. Albans Road by Route 100, had applied for demolition. St. Albans Properties, the developers of St. Albans, had purchased the property along with the other two corners at that major intersection and wanted to remove JP Connell House. JP Connell House had a significance because it was constructed by the same builder that did Old Pound School and is unique in terms of its materials and architecture. From the perspective of the Historic Preservation Commission, again, it wanted an opportunity to work with the owners and find options. Those options, as you know, include zoning and subdivision incentives and others that ultimately could be offered by the city, including fee waivers, charges, et cetera. After the efforts of the commission, the property owners against St. Albans Properties asked that the demolition permit be issued by the city, which it was. Fortunately, in that instance, another entity has stepped forward, JG Gruy, a commercial developer that is interested in the property, and their intent, based upon a presentation to the Historic Preservation Commission, is to restore the house and use the remaining 14-plus acres for cattle ranching. So, again, a potential win for the city. However, as you know, there are other properties that are at risk right now due to the sale by whatever organization. And we also are in the midst of updating, I shouldn't say updating, completing our first historic preservation plan. And so from the perspective of the department, we have at least two, if not more, significant historic assets under threat. We have a historic preservation plan that is nearing the first draft and availability for the review of the first draft by the end of this year. The thought was, why not impose a stay on all demolitions until such time the plan is complete? The plan will provide strategies for the commission and City Council to present to property owners who want to demolish significant historic assets. And for the most part, we'll provide an inventory of available tax credits, grants, and other things that might be available to the property owner to make that preservation action more feasible and less expensive. A stay is a major move, a moratorium. We've done them on telecommunications facilities. We've also done them on large water features at one point. And initially, when the city incorporated, there was a seven-month stay on all activity until master plan, and the plan use ordinances were updated. The moratorium is not unlimited. Again, as referenced in the report to City Council, the moratorium would end once the preservation plan is adopted by City Council. Tonight, the first step in that process is consideration by City Council, and the request before you thereafter is to authorize the matter to be presented to Planning and Zoning Commission at a public hearing, which is a necessary step as described by our city attorney, John Young. The department does not present this lightly because obviously there may be property owners impacted over the next five or six months. But I think the impact is worth the time, given that we are completing our first preservation plan, and that may be the key to providing a more successful approach with property owners to preserve assets. With that, the department's available for any comments or questions. And Mr. Lee and Mr. Young have assisted in the development of the report. So certainly, if you have questions for them, they're available as well. Thank you.
Hey, do we have any questions or comments, or anyone wishing to make a motion? Councilmember Marshall.
So, Joe, I get that part, and how long it is. I guess my question is, and always struggled with this one, if somebody is a legitimate owner of the property, can the city legally say that building that's unsafe and can't be occupied, you just can't tear it down, you have to take care of your building, or you have to fix it up? I mean, when somebody has one, they get to that state, can the city just legally say you can't take your property down?
No, not at this time. If a property is in such disarray or is a nuisance, we have a process in the nuisance code that actually would force them to remove it. Done it on one occasion previously, very, very many years ago. But we have a mechanism to remove a nuisance property, building that's a threat to the public. Our current code relative to historic preservation is voluntary. And so the concern was, and this was echoed at our master plan meeting last week, that we only have 60 days without the cooperation of the property owners to offer incentives and try to stop the demolition until at least there's an opportunity to explain what might happen if they were to proceed forward with a restoration, rehabilitation. So the 60-day window is tight, and the thought was maybe changing the code. And so there's just a lot of things up in the air right now, and certainly, if the stay is adopted or the term of the time may impact a few people, certainly. But I think, again, it's worth the risk for the city to try to do more preserve things like Mary Cliff Residence and et cetera.
Thank you.
I've got Councilmember Rambo, and then Councilmember Mabry, and Councilmember Crans.
Yeah, this is just a real brief one, Joe. In my, in my imperfect understanding of the number of requests that come in, it seems to me, as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission, that has to go out and look at each property as it comes in, we only get a couple a year, and so it's unlikely to impact more than a couple of folks, particularly going into the winter when there's not a lot of activity. So is that, is that a reasonable assumption? Because, I mean, this is not going to be overly burdensome because there might only be one or two requests that come in outside the, you know, before the five-month period that you suggested expires. Is that accurate?
I believe it to be. As you know, you've gone on most of the inspections, and many of those inspections, by the time we get to the property, it's been so, let's say, neglected.
Yeah, actively neglected in some case.
Recent times, we've the assets that are in relatively good shape being requested to be removed, and there's really no rational reason. In the Mary Cliff case, they were concerned about the cost of electric and liability. Well, the building was shuttered, locked, and secured for the most part. In the JP Connell instance, they just didn't feel like spending the money to maintain it, and they were concerned about vandalism that had begun at the property. So, yeah, I could, oftentimes, we see demolition requests as part of rezoning requests. At least you have an understanding that something's going to happen if you proceed forward with the demolition. Recent times, it just seems like it's a cost savings measure, and it's and the cost savings, when you compare it to the loss of the asset, seems very small.
Yeah, sometimes it seems as though they leave windows open on purpose so that the floors will rot and all those kinds of things, and it's just malicious neglect is what I would call it. But my question concerned how many people this would impact if we, if we instituted, and I think it's very, very many.
I concur.
Okay.
Councilmember Mabry.
Yes, thank you. And it accidentally follows a little with Mr. Rambo's comment. There are only a couple in the, in the middle right now, as you say, in a couple of years, it sounds like. Would it be burdensome to have staff or the Preservation Commission aggressively inventory potential qualifying addresses? And have them listed and on notice with a, with an action plan intended, a notification to the owner that you're guilty of having a qualifying historic preservation property. Here are your rules to work under now. No intentionally leaving windows open, no intentional interior damage to precipitate the need for demolition, as a recent case would have shown us. That seems more proactive than just trying to protect against things that might occur after the fact. And then my last question is, is there a mechanism for the city legally being able to condemn property? Of course, that goes with the cost. It's a sizable and important property. You're going to end up getting an arbitration that may assess it at higher than the city's willing to pay for it to take it over and protect it. So those are just more what-ifs that came up with me when I read a couple, a couple of phrases in the, in that, in this resolution. Thank you.
Well, certainly, the department and the city collectively could be more proactive. Oftentimes, some of the historic assets are not visible from the road. They're tucked in in the interior of the property, and it's just difficult to know. And in certain instances, you go by, like in the case of Mary Cliff Residence, Crown Castle has a telecommunications tower there. We renew the permit each year. So each year, we get to see the Mary Cliff Residence, which was across the driveway from the tower. Generally looked in good condition. When we went back last, it was like, well, nobody's been taking care of it. So even when we do maybe give a cast an eye toward it, we're not as proactive as we could be. I think that's what the preservation plan will help with, setting out steps for city officials, whether it's the elected, appointed, or current staff in terms of just what are, what are the steps you need to do to be more proactive regarding these assets and protecting them, even if we have a voluntary ordinance? So I think there's a, I think there could be a proactive approach. I'd like to see it in the plan first before we went outside and did something, let's say, maybe ordinance-wise. And then, yes, again, we have the nuisance code. We condemned a home, actually, a bayou up of Orville Road. It was owned by a doctor. He had received multiple warnings over multiple months. The kids were in there. They were in there late at night, loud music, parties, et cetera. The doctor didn't live there, reside there, and we have a process. There's a hearing. There's a hearing administrator. The hearing administrator makes a ruling based upon the evidence provided by both parties. And then ultimately, the cost of the demolition is to the city, and a lien's placed on the property to recover it on sale. In this instance, the property sold almost immediately after the house was removed.
I've got a, a case in point, what I think is a perfect case in point, at southeast quadrant of Orville and Etherington Road, the, the short cut. Or there's a residence there that's been there for the 38 years I've been there. It's had the black firebird parked there for 38 years, growing moss. And just two weeks ago, the first time I've ever noticed it clearly not occupied. It's, it's always looked like it just had some old hermit in it. But now there's branches, tree branches that look like they were cut and thrown across the tiny little lane right down there at the pit of, at Goat Hill on Orville Road. And it's owned by a trust by somebody, I think, who lives on, like, about a month ago, I looked this up. So I'm not positive of all the details. But being able to tell whether that was one of the, it looks old enough to be an original structure of the old town of Orville. And it's the only one around. The, the, the old Huppenberg place up on the top of Goat Hill is the only thing around it. So that'd be one to, we sure don't want to lose it because it's being intentionally, looked like it's being intentionally neglected or not habitated, not taken care of at all. It's starting to really look overgrown.
I'll have code enforcement visit the location as soon as possible.
Councilmember Crans.
A couple of questions. Ultimately, the, will the homeowner decide whether or not to keep the property or not?
Yes, there's been no inclination either on the part of the Citizens Oversight Group that's doing the master plan and on our Historic Preservation Commission to date to change our ordinance from voluntary to mandatory. What the department is recommending is doing a better job of providing information to property owners about their asset, particularly if they're inclined to demolish it, and be able to explain the incentives that are available and the tax credits and grants and all those things that both federal and state and local government.
Okay, so, so you grant the incentives to the, to the owner, and he says, I want to keep the property, and I'll take these incentives. What if he sells the property and somebody else comes in and says, hey, I want to get rid of it?
What we've done in the past where we have offered incentives and they've been accepted, like in the case of Higher Focus, which is the photography studio, we granted a relief to the traffic generation assessment fee. And for the most part, as I recall, the ordinance said if you're not, if you sell the property within the first five years, you're obligated to pay or refund the TGA. And so it's much like the homeowners and homeowners improvement plan that you offer through community development block grant funds. You have to establish, you have to reside there for the five years, or you have to pay back.
Five years, then you could, you or she could sell the property?
Certainly.
Now, do you have anything coming up on the list that we should be aware of?
I think you all heard that LaSalle Institute is for sale, and that's a concern.
Thanks. Okay, I didn't see any other folks that wish to speak, or do we have anyone on Zoom?
Mr. Mayor, Ms. McCutcheon, did I answer your question?
Okay, I do see Councilmember Farmer, and then we'll go to Councilmember Albers. Councilmember Farmer, please go ahead.
Yeah, hey, Joe. Do we have like a specific timeline on, on how quickly the plan is going to be put in? I know it's like five or six months, but sometimes these things drift a little bit.
Certainly, if you're talking about the master plan, you've hit the nail on the head. But in this particular case, we're expecting the first draft at the meeting, the upcoming Historic Preservation Commission meeting in October, and we have to have it completed per our grant, the Department of Natural Resources, by spring of 2026.
Thanks.
Okay, is that all? Councilmember Farmer, you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, Councilmember Albers.
Mr. Vunich, I heard a rumor that LaSalle did sign a letter of intent with somebody. Have you heard anything to that regard?
I would defer to Mr. Lee or Mr. Mayor.
At this time, we have heard whispers, but nothing's been confirmed, and no one has reached out to the city.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for your questions.
All right, CNN, is there anyone that would wish to make a motion for this item? The Director Vunich, you want to clarify what you're looking for, the direction?
This is just a motion to forward the moratorium, the concept, to the Planning and Zoning Commission that hold a public
and Zoning Commission that hold a public hearing. After the public hearing, there will have to be a recommendation, then that comes back to City Council. So this is just the first step to see what the response is from the community.
All right, Councilmember Rambo. All right, Councilmember Rambo is making the motion. We need a second. Councilmember Albers is the second. Any other discussion?
Welcome.
Was all those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstained? All right, the motion passes. We'll move into miscellaneous now, and we have two receive and file items. Director Vunich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, the first item on the agenda, my agenda, is, I believe, Playpen, Playpen LLC, care of Terry Gruy. Approximately seven years ago, the Planning and Zoning Commission granted a conditional use permit for a large water feature on a property that's approximately 31 acres in size. As part of that conditional use permit that ultimately was reviewed by City Council and authorized as well, was a seven-year renewal period. Mr. Newberry and I visited the property. The lake is in excellent condition, as well as the dam. And the report to the Planning and Zoning Commission from the Department of Planning recommended the conditional use permit be extended for an additional seven years. The Planning and Zoning Commission concurred and granted that extension. As with any conditional use permit, the City Council has the right to exercise their power of review. And that would have to occur tonight because there is a 15-day time limit associated with that exercise of power of review. So tonight, you have a favorable recommendation and action from the Planning and Zoning Commission on this conditional use permit. After any questions or comments, the department would be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Councilmember Krantz.
What if the dam breaks? Are there other properties that will be damaged from it?
In this particular instance, there were concerns because the property owner has a dam height of 33 feet. If it's 35 feet or greater, it has to meet all the requirements of the Missouri Department of Natural Resources. But with our conditional use permit, we required it. So that's the first thing. We have, for all intents and purposes, an overbuilt dam. Secondly, it is on a secondary tributary to the main channel of Bottom Creek. So the distance from the dam through the secondary tributary to the main channel is substantial. And then, and all of the houses are three acre or greater on three acre or greater size lots. But it seems like we've done our homework. And if there was a dam failure, most of the water would be in the second dairy tributary long before it got to the main channel. And so again, we did our homework. The dam looks in good shape. No trees, a lot of established ground cover, and at the base or foot of the dam, like the levee and Chesapeake, some access roads.
So the neighbors don't complain about it? Are people along the creek there? Okay.
No, I've not heard any complaints. We get complaints about the property because the gentleman that owns it doesn't live there, but he farms. So there are some times that there's activity at odd hours, but it's nothing to do with the large water feature.
Councilmember Mayberry.
Oh, yeah, please check the microphone. Thank you. Page two of the PDF caught my eye. During a recent site visit, at least three other structures have been added to the property. All of these are not intended for permanent habitation, do have some utility services to them. Several of these structures appear to be placed without city authorization permits. This is on a property that sounds prior to the property in question, but required for access to the property with the pond on it. It made me think of concern for building attractive nuisances for parties for safety. So it didn't seem to me that that observation by that visit caught enough attention to get past recommendation of extension of the permit. Is there anything there to go after or to make sure they don't be doing that again?
Well, the department tries to separate the apples and oranges. The request before it, in terms of a recommendation to the commission, was a large water feature. Mr. Newberry and I visited the property. Property owner was quite frank with us about certain structures. And certainly, I explained to him that permits are necessary. None of them are habitable, which is a key component. If they were habitable and someone was residing in them, then the department would have recommended to the commission not to extend the conditional use permit until those issues are addressed. The department will address these structures. It's just not as part of the conditional use permit. It'll be a more typical enforcement action.
As Director Vunich said, if there's no action, then we can move forward.
Unless the City Council would like to authorize its power of review in 15 days, the extension would become effective.
All right, CNN, Director Vunich.
Thank you. And then the last item, the Planning and Zoning Commission authorized an outdoor game court on Shepherd Ridge Road at its meeting last Monday. And as with all of these items, outdoor game courts, water features, et cetera, we present them as a receive and file to the City Council. Do you know what's going on in your ward and within the city itself? So if there are any questions on this particular item, Mr. Newberry did a wonderful job. Pickleball can be noisy, so the property owner and the contractor agreed that a condition set forth by the Planning and Zoning Commission lowered the elevation of the play surface to be protected on two sides by grade, added a fence on the exposed side toward the nearest home, and then added landscaping. So it was a win-win for everyone.
Councilmember Mayberry.
I don't mean to have something to say about everything, I promise. But this, I seem to recall, got more than minimal resident, surrounding resident support. Was that the, is that what you all recall too? That there didn't seem to be a whole lot of widespread outcry against the evils of pickleball?
Mr. Newberry usually gets those calls since he prepared the report. He's shaking his head no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, City Administrator Lee, do you want to speak to item B, which is the submission of the proposed annual budget for fiscal year 2026 by the Crossings Community Improvement District?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. This is the annual budget for the Crossing Community Improvement District that is submitted to the the board that approved the district in and of itself each year. The the board here can have an official action to submit to the CCID to be able to take into consideration at their November meeting. That said, tonight would be available to answer any questions. The main things to look over for 2026 is that there are no more assessments being levied for 2025 and 26. The debt service reserve fund that exists and was created as part of the city's founding actually is enough money to cover the last debt service payment on March 1. So officially, the bonds will be paid off March 1. And then at that point, the sales tax and the property tax components can continue as is. But that is, that's the main consideration. There's about to be work can started on the the parking garage, where we'll be sealing the second floor of the deck. That is a 2025 expenditure. And moving forward, there could be discussions about how the city can help maintain some of these assets, specifically the the parking garage. But happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Krantz. The the parking garage, does it get any, any of the Sid money at all?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So part of the CCID, all of the property tax that is collected in that's the small district, City Wildwood does not have a property tax, but the CCID does. All of that is to go towards the funding of repairs for the parking garage. Any money not used in a fiscal year is then retained as a reserve, a sinking fund, if you will, for the parking garage, which is what the district is actually drawing from to be able to complete the repairs this year.
And how much money is that?
It's, there's not much. There's about $300,000 left in that fund after the $250,000 repairs that are taking place this year.
Okay, all right, thanks. Councilman Marshall.
Is the the new 188 apartments, is that in the CCID?
No, it is not. Yep. So for clarification too, I can answer that. So the CCID, just to get bearings, it starts here at the garage, and it would include the parcel here right next across the street from City Hall, goes to all the way down to Walgreens, and then goes to the Starbucks, and then goes over to the the retirement home over there. So it's a small portion of the the town center here. And, you know, there have been discussions in the past about expanding the CCID, but without a capital investment to kind of spearhead an expansion, there hasn't been much interest from the private property owners around it to be able to participate.
Right.
I got this too, Mayor. But tonight, and also via email, after after tonight, we have the meeting for the CCID next month. If there's any comments from the council, if you want to submit those tonight or via email, those will be forwarded directly to the board for consideration.
Okay, so that concludes all miscellaneous items here. Is there anything else in the miscellaneous under you wish to ask? Director Vunich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me. As many of you know, we held our board and commission appreciation event on Friday night. Each council member has the opportunity to have one of our pieces of wild woodware that we offered to the volunteers, or volunteers in many ways as well. And I think most of you got them, except Mr. Galati, Mr. Bockert, Ms. McCutcheon, and Mr. Tradier. So during the break, if you'd like to come back in the storeroom, I'll get you your jackets. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Vunich. All right, seeing no other hands up, then we can look for a motion to, oh, Councilmember Rambo.
I was, the staff for their efforts on that, on that commission dinner, it was really, really great. It's always well done. The food was delicious. The service was great. And you guys were working like dogs. And you never, you know, you kind of, you seldom get the credit you deserve. So thank you very much for that.
Great. We'll look for a motion to adjourn the work session and Councilmember Rambo. Okay, seconded by Councilmember Bockert. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstained? All right, the work session is adjourned. We will resume with our main meeting at 6:30. Thank you. Anyone opposed or abstain? All right, the work session is adjourned. We will resume with our main meeting at 6:30. Thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our city council meeting for Monday, October 13th. It is now 6:30. We will get started. So we will proceed with the roll call.
Councilmember Garitano.
Name?
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
No, you had said councilmember.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am so sorry. Mayor Garitano.
That's fine.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Present.
Councilmember Nian. Councilmember Ottenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Tradier.
Here.
Councilmember Mabry.
Here.
Councilmember Roblouski.
Here.
Councilmember Preston.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Rambo.
Here.
Councilmember Bockert. Councilmember Crans. Councilmember Vanek.
Here.
Councilmember Albers. Councilmember Galani.
Thank you. Okay, now, I'd like to ask if you can please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
To the republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The mayors, announcements and appointments. Do want to again reiterate what was mentioned during our work session to appreciate all our volunteer residents that serve on boards and commissions. And Dr. Rambo had mentioned that earlier, recognizing the event that took place last week to extend our appreciation. So I'd like to note that we do have some appointments under the, we have announcements and appointments are part of the consent agenda. So we'll move forward with the approval of the minutes, which will also be as part of the consent agenda. So now we will move into public participation. I'd just like to review a couple of items regarding public participation. When your name is called, please come forward to the podium and state your name and your ward number. If you do not have a ward, state your address for the record. Also, please keep in mind that public comments are limited to five minutes. So as you approach the five minutes, we will let you know that you have 30 seconds remaining and certainly when the time is up. We also ask if you do come up to speak, if the comments have been expressed by the person prior you, you can certainly state that you're here and want to reiterate what was previously said, that it's always appreciated. And we do ask you to be respectful in your comments when you come up to speak. And if you do have any questions, the council member will make note of it. They may choose to respond at the meeting or may follow up with a response. So we'll proceed now with public participation. Can we have the first speaker?
Bridget Fisher wants to speak on Turnberry Place.
Good evening. My name is Bridget Fisher. I am in Ward Two. I am here tonight to just present an update on Turnberry Place neighborhood at Turnberry Place Drive at Shucker Road. We did want to let everybody know that we did submit our score review and score, excuse me, score assessment. I apologize. Back to Director Brown, and we look forward to meeting with him to discuss that further. We do believe that the score will be substantially reduced based on the new information that we have received from the Metro West Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have the next speaker.
David Messmer, Economic Development and Real Estate Development.
Good evening. My name is David Messner. I live in Ward Three. I'm coming to address the council. I've spoken with the Economic Development Committee a few times. I was deeply troubled by the long process it took to get our chapter 100 done for the apartments here. In particular, the comments that showed up in West Magazine around the nature of those subsidies. And I think it's really important to note that Wildwood does not have a long list of developers banging down the door to come build in Wildwood. Not only that, we have a decreasing school population that's projected to decrease over the next decade. We're being asked to fund more school funds through a property tax assessment while the seniors are abating their own property taxes. This is not a recipe for growth in Wildwood. It's not a recipe for increasing property values. And it's not a recipe for maintaining businesses in Wildwood. Twenty, thirty years ago, when the Wildwood Town Center Plan was adopted, it was for a highly dense residential district surrounded by a rural community. We've done the rural community and we keep obstructing the dense residential district. We spend a year and a half talking about open signs or the nature of signage on buildings while we block people who want to come in and develop, or we celebrate the reduction of density in subdivisions. On the one hand, I understand we want to make sure that we're not going to get excess traffic. I understand that we don't want all the other externalities that can come with too much growth or unmoderated growth. And I respect the fact that we don't want Wildwood to look like Chesterfield Valley. On the other hand, we have to ask ourselves, why are all the facilities on Etherington going everywhere else except the Wildwood side? Why are developments going elsewhere besides Wildwood? We have a reputation across the region as being a place that is both difficult to work with. And I think the quotes that my colleagues gave was, if I had $200,000 to waste, I'd propose a project in Wildwood. We ask for more and we give less and we make it troublesome to come here and develop. And then we wonder why there's no development. And the answer is, there's better places to go. I can go to St. Charles. I can go to Eureka. I can go to Chesterfield. And here we are today. We're at a point where whether we like it or not, Washington is growing, Eureka is growing, Chesterfield is about to grow immensely over the next 10 years. We're getting the externalities of the growth and we're not getting any of the benefits for it. So I think we need to start taking the approach of yes, and we need to take the approach of yes, and how can we do that in a way that benefits Wildwood? We don't have to compare ourselves to Chesterfield or Ellisville. We can look to places like Town and Country. We can look to places like Frontenac that I think reflect the sentiments and the style that people in Wildwood would like compared to a strip mall. And this is okay. There is a need for development here. There is a need for growth. Not all developers are deep-pocketed rich folks. There are individuals who put all of their money on the line because they think they can make more by investing in communities. They're not all bottomless pits of private equity money who can spend as much dollars as the city would like them to, to do the things that most other cities will do. And I think we heard some of that in the debate around the apartments that are going to go in next door. So I'm thrilled that we finally got that. But I think the council and the Economic Development Committee needs to take a look at the region and look at the demographics. Look what's happening in the Rockwood School District. Look what's happening in St. Louis County. Look what's happening in the city. And if we keep fighting every development that comes in and we keep trying to make people do it our way differently each time, I think we're in for a really rude awakening when we finally wake up and nobody wants to come to the party. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Adam Epstein, Dear Wildwood Program.
Hey there. My name's Adam Epstein, resident of Wildwood, Ward Six. I'm here just to educate about my experience as an avid bow hunter, an outdoorsman for 20 years here in the area. When I first started the area, I'd go out and see a deer every day. I drive around now and I don't see it. And I'm not just making this up. You can, there are certain areas that there will be a lot of deer. There are other areas, there are no deer. It may be the random one or two deer. For example, this week, and I went out, sat every day, every morning. I saw two does on 120 acres in Wildwood. What's, what's going on? But not that I'm against the calling of deer, the killing of deer. It is needed in certain areas, but we need a study done that's from 2025, not 2020. We need to see a study done now, last month, not in the dead of the winter when the herd animals are herded together because they're cold and they're trying to fight off predators. You don't get a good study at that point. Another thing I want to talk about is my family. So I told my daughter about, I'm going to go to a meeting tonight and we're going to talk about deer. And she goes. And she goes, well, what are you going to do, Dad? I said, well, I want to talk to the city about, let's stop killing so many deer. And my little daughter came unglued. She's nine years old. We enjoy sitting together in the woods. I'm teaching my daughter valuable lessons. Teaching her skills, you know, patience, being outdoors, not being on her tablet. But what am I going to teach a kid if there's nothing to see? You know, that's kind of disappointing. Another big thing is I want to talk about, we are disrupting the food chain. It's just the deer, right? What happens when the deer go? The coyotes increase. The coyotes are increasing. I got video last night. I got four coyotes chasing down a deer on one of my cameras. This is quite common now. I got coyotes coming around my house nonstop. What else are we going to have? All our pets are now going to be at risk. Your cats, your dogs, they're just easy prey now. The rabbits, they're going to be gone. It's just, it's a domino effect that we really need to address and get some really good information. And is there too many deer? Another question would be, let's speak to the police. Are there car accidents going up? I've heard rumors actually they're going down. So maybe there is a sign that the program has done enough, maybe too much. Has conservation been included in this? This is a state problem, not a city problem, in my opinion. It'd be wonderful to hear them. I mean, they have extra seasons. They, who knows? But I appreciate the time today, guys. Very passionate about this. It's my life, you know? It's, some people go to the mall, go to baseball games. I go to chill in the woods, you know? And that's what me and my family do. We eat the meat. We have fun doing it. And I want to see that tradition continue and I want to see it for other people. And you know, that would be the same as you, sorry, parks are closed. You can't go walking with your kids. You can't go fishing with your kids because, well, we got rid of it. Well, let's not do that till you see your. Thank you, guys, for your time. A little nervous, as you can tell. I don't like talking shit.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Terry Comely, Dear Culling.
Hello and thank you for your time. My name is Terry Comely and I am a property owner in Wildwood, Ward Three. I'm an outdoorsman and a conservationist. I have lived here in this area for 65 years. I've seen a lot of the deer population go from crazy to, even three years ago, before the culling started, as hunters, we started to see in certain areas it was decreasing. I came before you tonight to talk about this program. When I first heard of the problem, I was not totally against it. I realized that there were many deer in the first two areas targeted. That was an area that I hunt a lot. The Missouri Department of Conservation estimates that there were 700 deer in this 10 square mile area. The Missouri Department of Conservation recommends a carrying capacity of 20 deer per square mile. 661 deer were killed. And I know these numbers are, they can be looked at a little bit closer. But at least 39 deer are 3.9 deer per square mile. There are no deer. They have completely been wiped out. Why were so many deer killed? Why were bucks killed? And who decided to kill this many? Sounds to me like we're dealing with eradication instead of conservation. We like seeing the deer. When I sit in my deer stand, I don't see any deer. When I check my trail cameras, I don't see any deer. They're not there. They're gone. The place where I was going to take my granddaughter for her first hunt has no deer. A place where we used to watch deer as a family for enjoyment has no deer. As a grandfather, I feel something has been taken away from me and I'm very upset. It is hard to explain to a nine-year-old that 661 deer were killed because of there being too many. How do you explain that to a nine-year-old? She said, Papa, the deer were here before we were. Kids are not dumb. Nothing can fix what has already happened, but I feel the program needs to be put on hold until a new aerial survey is conducted, not a ground survey from roadways. If we don't know how many deer we have, how do we know how many to kill? I feel this needs to be done by a company other than White Buffalo. Seems to me this is a conflict of interest, having a company benefiting from the total deer they kill based upon their number. The second issue is why are we spending eight, close to $800 of tax money per deer without discussing other options involving landowners and hunters? The same liability insurance provided by White Buffalo can be provided by the hunter, though it's not totally a liability issue. This is sad that we live in a time where most taxpayers do not even know where their tax dollars are going. They go to work, raise their kids, pay their taxes, and rely on the city leaders to make the right decisions for them. 99% of the people I talk to are not even aware that this culling has been going on. And when I talk to them about it, they're furious. They say, we've got better things to spend our money on. They say it's crazy. There's got to be a better way. In closing, I believe you're trying to do what is best for the city, but without all the information needed. We need conservation efforts for our deer herd and discussing the best allocation of our tax bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Dwayne Bass, wishes to speak on Bill 3012.
Good evening, council. My name is Dwayne Bass of Ward Four. And I'm one of the trustees of Highland Summit. And I'm here to speak on Bill 3012. And my request is very simple. As I speak on behalf of the residents, it is our request and our ask that we cable the vote tonight to give, to give the residents an opportunity in the next four to six weeks so we can have our own vote and make our own recommendation in terms of where we stand. We believe it's not only fair, it's not only neighborly, it's just what is right. Thank you.
Next speaker. Thank you.
Don Furman, Bill 3012.
Hi, I'm Don Furman. I'm a resident at Highland Summit, Ward Three. I want to speak about the same issue. The 100-yard stretch of Highland Summit that borders this lot in easement is our privacy fence. It's what separates us from White Cliff, separates us from the lot at 815 and Stricker Road. Punching through that wall of trees and vegetation breaches the integrity of our subdivision. Also, speaking of trees, I understand that the reach from the proposed building site down to Stricker Road is longer than the stretch up to Highland Summit. Highland Summit's the path of least resistance, but that's not our concern. That's a builder concern. If it costs that person more to get down to Stricker than it does to Highland Summit, we shouldn't suffer the consequences of that decision. And finally, there are 84 homeowners in Highland Summit. This is about one potential homeowner who hasn't built yet. How can we favor the convenience of one homeowner against the safety and inconvenience of all the people in Highland Summit? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks. Just kindly ask folks to remain respectful for all our speakers. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Tom Mitchell, Dear Eradication.
Tom Mitchell. Hello, Mr. Mayor, councilpeople. Thank you for having us to your meeting. I live in Ward Three. I've lived and worked in this area of Wildwood for 60 years. I don't deer hunt here. I used to. I've been an avid bowhunter for my whole life. I manage my own farm in Pike County, Missouri. When I say manage, we manage habitat, we manage species, we manage doe population, we manage mature buck population through hunting and through, as I said, the management of the habitat. So I'm pretty qualified to make this observation tonight. Like Mr. Comely, I was not against the culling that the city had planned. I was somewhat indifferent to it. There are parts of the city where you need to eradicate overpopulation of does, but not in the area that you did. You didn't any one and any two, as Terry said, there were too many deer killed. 92% of the herd was eradicated by white buffalo. And Mr. Lee, I've read your documentation, the documentation that's on the website, et cetera. The master plan is not lining up with the actual execution of the plan. And that's why I've been emailing you with no responses to find out what exactly is the plan. And we need to have some cooperation on that side. So, look, our objective is not to stop Wildwood from culling. Our objective is to make it a conservation mindset, to preserve the natural resource that really belongs to the people. You know, legally, they do belong to the state. They don't belong to Wildwood. They belong to the state. And quite frankly, before that, they belonged to God Almighty. And they are for our enjoyment, our quiet enjoyment, for recreation, and even for a food source. So White Buffalo, as I mentioned, has eradicated 92% of the herd in the northern sections of the city. And being indifferent to this, I didn't notice this until this summer. Driving Stricker, driving Shepherd, every evening at dusk at Deer 30, we call it, no deer. And that's when I called Mr. Comely and I said, where are our deer? He said, they killed them. I said, who killed them? He said, the city of Wildwood. And I said, well, that's not right. So I started digging into the research and that's when I decided to get involved. As mentioned earlier, too, the city is using antiquated data from 2020. A lot has changed between today and 2019, really, when that data was active. What has changed? Number one, the legalization of crossbows. Crossbows has increased the deer kills because it's easier. Number two, EHD. EHD is known as blue tongue disease. It kills massive amounts of deer and we've had outbreaks of EHD in this area. It's not CWD. It's different. Number three is just general hunting overall. The data did not also factor in nuisance tags. I know Jimmy the farmer, other farmers are issued nuisance tags. And these tags are used for farmers to eradicate deer off their crops. And they're entitled to do so, but they're issued 15, 25 tags every summer and they kill these deer over their crops. That was not factored into the data that you're using from 2020. We talked about the deer per square mile. So my question is on the eradication. This is a serious question. And you said that people would give us a response, correct, Mr. Mayor? Do you want eradication of deer in Wildwood?
This is your time to speak. Responses will be provided.
I will take that right now as either indifferent or yes, because that's our impression that the deer are considered rats and rodents in this community, and that's just not the case. Deer do not spread COVID. That's in the documentation in city. They don't spread huge amounts of Lyme disease. You know what spreads more disease than deer? Dogs, mice, bats. Let's go eradicate those if you're going to talk about eradicating diseases spread by deer. So the question is, what's the solution? So number one, we're requesting a pause in the killing by white buffalo. Pause it until you can do another deer count. You do a deer count with thermal drones. There's a company called MidwestDeers surveys dot com. MidwestDeers surveys dot com. They're actually contracted with the Department of Conservation right now to start counting deer in parks in this area. They can do a much more accurate count, and not only can they count the deer, they can tell you the gender, whether it's a doe or a buck, and actually tell you the maturity of the deer. That's conservation. Number two, reduce the quotas assigned to white buffalo. Just don't kill so many. In the literature from Wildwood and the master plan, it says 40 deer per square mile. But somehow we got to 20. It doubled. And the reality in the execution of the plan, it went to six per square mile, and that's the fact. Number four, involve your hunting community. You have a very small representation of the hunting community here tonight. They're willing to help you and they can do it effectively, Mr. Rambo. You know they can, especially with a good management of the administrative side. How can they do that? Well, number one, extend your minimum amount of time.
Yes, if you can wrap up your comments, thank you.
Extend your minimum acreage from three acres, excuse me, from three acres to one acre and allow residents to combine their parcels to allow bowhunters on there and take it a step further. Let them bait with corn December through January so they can also eliminate does only and go one step further, pay them a bounty. That can be administered as done out west through block land management and it can be done here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker, please.
Scott and Beth Nelson, Bill 3012.
Good evening, council. Deer and easements, those are the themes for tonight. I'm here representing, actually, several of us are here representing Highland Summit tonight. You've heard from a couple of the homeowners. I'm also a homeowner. What we're here tonight to do is to ask you for a delay. 50 of our homeowners have signed a petition, over 60% of them, asking for this delay. What has occurred is there's been an approval of an easement, but that approval was done without subdivision approval, without our trustees, and by a private homeowner. This violates the indentures. Mayor, you came to our subdivision meeting and you commended us on the indentures and on our participation and our support of it. I don't always like our indentures. I didn't like it when my daughter asked if she could have a chicken at the end of the school year and the trustees pointed to our indentures and said, that's not allowed. I didn't like it, but I respected due process. I respected the governance. And I respected the fact that these are in place for a reason. And any changes to them need to be approved. The private homeowner who approved this easement did so without the approval of the trustees, without a formal review. This home will utilize the signage, will utilize the access, they'll enjoy all of the benefits that are paid for by the homeowners. Counsel, we're asking for a delay. We're not against development. We are pro due process. And we respectfully ask that you delay the vote this evening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sonya Coleman, Bill 3012.
Hello, council. This is Sonya Coleman and I am also with the Highland Summit Subdivision. And as many of us have communicated, we found out, we were informed by Wildwood that there was going to be a rezoning of this property, but nowhere were we informed that it would be an easement into our subdivision. So when we found this out, I've actually spent, you know, quite a bit of time communicating with all our homeowners in our subdivision, 84 of us. And 50 of them have responded today that they would like to be a part of this, sharing their concerns. And so we really didn't have a chance to get our ducks in a row because we didn't know about this until after the last meeting where we discovered there was an easement. So yes, our subdivision does have indentures. We would like to follow due process. We'd like to have our subdivision get together and, you know, determine if this is something that we do want to approve. And if so, what are the conditions involved with that? This is also at a blind turn on our street that is dangerous, especially in the winter, because you have to kind of speed up to get up our hill and then you have to take this quick turn. So a lot of people have safety concerns. There's other concerns as well. But ultimately, we want to have time to have a meeting to discuss this, have some discussion with this property owner, find out what the arrangement is, if there is money involved in this easement. And if that is the case, we do feel like that's also considered a subdivision or improvement upon the property, which also would be against our indentures. So ultimately, that's what we would like. We'd like a delay. We'd like some extra time to get our group together and get our homeowners together and figure out if we need to take legal action or if we can work this out amongst the property. I would also like to bring up that, you know, we've done some legal research. There are other access points to this property. So our street is not the only access point. I realize if it was, we probably wouldn't have a leg to stand on. But there is another subdivision close by that is a cul-de-sac with two homes on it and doesn't have much traffic, as well as the originating property through Stricker Road. So there are other ways that this could be accomplished without necessarily coming through our subdivision. So those are the points we'd like to make at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Rick Stepp, Bill 3012.
Thank you. Yeah, I would just like to kind of reinforce and reiterate what I... Yeah, I would just like to reiterate, uh, kind of reinforce and reiterate what, uh, I fellow homeowners, uh, in Highland Summit, um, have said. I agree with all of it. Uh, one of the other things that, uh, that's come to my attention is, and, and, and the problem is, there's, there's too much, there's either too little information or there's too much information. Uh, nothing's official. We hear, oh, they're going to, uh, be a member of our, our homeowners association, paying dues and abiding by our bylaws. Then the next thing I heard is that, no, they're not going to do that. So, um, I just don't know how a, a house can be built in our, and, and access, have access to our subdivision and not be a, abide by the rules that we abide by. Um, I don't particularly want a chicken, but, but there are things that, that bother me about the, about the rules, and I think it's a, it's, um, uh, we've already found that our HOA has a lack of teeth, and I think what you're doing, if you allow this to just slide through, is, it's, it's going to be the death of HOAs. Why should I pay my dues? Why should, you know, I mean, I guess, uh, you know, maybe they'll take me to court, I don't know, but, um, uh, but why, um, I, I think it's a slippery slope, and I, I'd like more time to, to get official information, get something binding. We're going to be, I don't mind having a new neighbor, um, I just want them to have, play by the same rules that we all do and abide by our homeowners association bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Dan Lay regarding the deer calling.
Good evening, council. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to piggyback off of-
Just name and ward, please. Thank you.
Yes, uh, sorry, no ward. Uh, address is thirty-eight twenty-nine Lexington Drive. Um, so to reiterate what, uh, Mr. Mitchell and a few of the others on the deer calling initiative have mentioned, um, I just, uh, you know, he hit all the main points, both of these gentlemen have, uh, the three that have spoken, um, I think it's pretty clear, though, that, uh, the numbers don't lie, and, um, going off of previous numbers from 2020 surveys, uh, is outdated, it doesn't make sense, it's eliminating a natural resource that, um, is, is not going to be there for future generations, um, and, and bringing in an outside contract company like White Buffalo, um, and going off of these outdated numbers, um, that, that isn't letting the experts like the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, Missouri Department of Conservation, and the, uh, the thermal drone study that needs to be conducted, as Mitch, Mr. Mitchell stated, um, that would be the, the proper way to go about this. So I would, again, reiterate that I think that there needs to be a pause on this initiative until further studies can be conducted, um, to ensure that this is being done properly and not fully eradicating. Um, a few other points about this, about the way that, uh, white buffalo goes about this, um, they're using headshots on the deer. Sorry to be morbid, but, uh, being a bow hunter myself, I hunt inside of West St. Charles, uh, West St. Louis County, um, St. Charles County, Warren County, um, and I only started in twenty nineteen, and, and I took Missouri Conservation Department's, uh, Hunter Education Certification Program so that I could teach my son, who's now fourteen years old, and, um, just the amount of value and learning and respect for life and for, um, natural resources and kind of the value of all these different things, family and tradition, that I've learned and gained from this. I don't want to be lost for future generations with the, the loss of the, of the resource. Um, and one of the things that was such a paramount, um, teaching for me in this, uh, Hunter Education Certification Program offered by Missouri Conservation Department is the, the ethics of a, a quick ethical kill, um, that's usually going for the vitals of a deer, the, the heart, liver, and lung, the heart and lungs, whatever's going to make the most, quickest, least amount of suffering kill on the animal. Um, now what white buffalo is doing is they're doing headshots on the deer, and the problem with that is, you're not, you have a very small target, um, and a very high probability of making a, an inaccurate shot, of wounding the deer, not necessarily mortally, but leaving it, as Mr. Mitchell said, open for a good chance of that being devoured by coyotes or, or just loss of life by starvation eventually. Um, so, you know, that's one of the big things. CWD control is something that's constantly being discussed, and that's another problem with the headshot proposed issue is, you shoot a deer in the head, you're spreading brain matter on the ground. Now, there's what's called prions in the deer's brain matter, um, that are what carry the CWD, um, disease, and that goes into the soil and is permanently there. So we, if we're wanting to stress not putting CWD out there and continuing to spread this disease, we need to not have company going out there making headshots on these deer and spilling the prions on the soil for other deer to pick this up. Um, so some other problems are, you know, the overdevelopment, the lack of hunting and education programs, it's, it's kind of fallen off of most people's radar. It, we're the problem, the overdevelopment, the overpopulation of, of people pushing into the natural habitats, leaving the deer in, in very small, isolated areas. It's not the deer's fault that they're stuck coming into our, you know, our properties and our yards. We need to find ways to work with them and not against them. Um, and, uh, so I think some solutions to that are, are promoting incentivizing youth hunter, uh, programs, field to fork programs, and, um, sharing the harvest programs where the citizens can help to manage through the hands-on involvement, and they can do good for the community at the same time. Um, and there's also been initiatives out west where there's-
Thirty seconds.
Sure. Thank you. Wildlife crossing projects where, uh, there's been developments of actual crossings similar to like, uh, overpasses where the wildlife can cross and eliminate some of these roadway, um, incidents with collisions and things like that. So I think that funding should be pushed towards that and not towards the mass exterminations. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Elizabeth Lum, Bill three zero one two.
Uh, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Lum. Uh, the address is seventy-seven eleven Carondelet Avenue, Suite eight hundred, uh, St. Louis, six-three-one-oh-five. Uh, so I've, uh, been up in front of you a few times. I believe we first started this process of rezoning the property and then later subdividing it in June. In June, there was a public hearing, which was, uh, continued until July. We spoke again in July. In August, I believe the Planning and Zoning Commission voted and recommended the approval of the rezoning. In September, we were here again in front of this council at a public hearing, uh, to discuss the rezoning of the property. At that time, the plat, or the proposed plans clearly showed an easement. We were always upfront that this easement was going to be required, and it would be recorded at some point. Um, it wasn't hidden. Um, the rezoning was approved, uh, without conditions. Uh, now what we've got in front of us is the approval of a plat. Plat approval is an administrative task for the council. Basically, if the plat meets the requirements of the city, it must be approved. We believe the plat meets the requirement of the city. We've relied on, uh, staff to take a look at that, and I'm sure that they've advised you accordingly as well. Uh, with regard to the allegations that we've subdivided somebody's property, um, we have not, uh, it is just an easement, which is just the right to use it. There are potentially legal issues with the use of the property. We looked at the indenture at length before we started this process. We do not believe that there is a violation of the indentures. Um, to the extent that somebody else does, that would be a legal issue between the parties to resolve. We've contacted the trustees, I believe, more than once. I know at one point the mayor asked us to do so. We have voluntarily offered to pay assessments. Um, we have said that we would consider annexing into the subdivision at some point in the future, although not right away because, you know, we're working towards getting this approved. Um, and we've otherwise tried to be upfront and cooperative with the homeowners. So, um, to the extent that, uh, it's been requested to table this matter, uh, I request that you do not because there is, uh, no more discussion to be had. This is now at the administrative point. We're looking at a plat that meets the city's requirements. Um, and again, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay, we don't have any other speakers. All right, do we have anyone online that wishes to speak? If you do wish to speak, please use the raise hand feature.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to address a couple of things with the deer management program. This will be something that's discussed up in the November, in November, and, uh, actually tomorrow at Administration and Public Works, uh, committee meeting, um, for twenty-twenty-six. Wanted to quickly note a couple of the things that were mentioned today. Uh, the study that was used, that was done in twenty twenty, but we also had follow-up studies completed in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, and the city is currently looking at doing an aerial, um, heat map survey as well. So that is just something to keep into mind. The most recent survey results show, uh, anywhere between thirty, uh, about thirty-four and ninety-four deer within the NE two region. So just saying this, this is recorded back in March of twenty twenty-four, uh, twenty twenty-five. So we've done this a couple of different times. And just to speak to one of the gentleman's comments about, um, the, the shots that are, I guess, were taken, the, the risk factor, um, there have been six hundred and sixty-one deers culled through this program, and there have been six hundred and sixty-one shots. And one of the main considerations when speaking to residents that want to participate in the program, which we've had over two hundred, reach out to us to participate, is that they want to feel safe and secure about the fact if someone's going to access their property, they want to know that that individual is experienced, and they have, um, they want to know everything about that person before they would go onto the property without permission. That said, I would just like to say from the department's perspective, if folks want to support and go out and hunt, there are firearm regulations in place, uh, but we'd love to get you in contact with property owners that we're, we're aware of. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes then public participation. So we'll move forward. We, we don't have any public hearings. We'll move over into legislation under unfinished business, and there are three bills under unfinished business. So if there's no, uh, any, no one that opposes, I'd like to request that we read, uh- Okay, three zero one zero. Okay, so we'll request if there's no, um, no one that opposes to read en masse bills, three zero zero seven and bill three zero zero eight. Is there any objection to that? All right, seeing none, uh, your motion for the, for, uh, for this second reading of bills, three zero zero seven and three zero zero eight, made by Councilmember McCutcheon, the second, and by Councilmember Bockard. All those in favor of the second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstain? Okay, uh, please go ahead and read the bills for the second reading.
Bill three zero zero seven, an ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a city contractor agreement with Omni Tree Service Incorporated for the planting of new trees within the public rights of way of the city of Wildwood. Bill three zero zero eight, an ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a supplemental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to authorize an amendment to the project development schedule for the Green Pines Park Connector Trail Shared Use Path in the city of Wildwood.
Hey, do we have, uh, any additional information that either the Department of Public Works or, um, would like to add?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Garretano. I have nothing additional to add. The, uh, bills are ready for final passage, but if there's any final questions from the council, I'll do my best to entertain them.
Okay, any questions from the council? All right, uh, and seeing none, uh, then, um, can we get a, um, can we have a vote for final passage of these bills? Yeah, so we'll need a first and a second. Made by Councilmember Rambo, seconded by Councilmember Bockard, for a second, uh, reading of these bills, please, uh, we'll need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Nian?
Yes.
Councilmember Ottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Tradier?
Yes.
Councilmember Mabry?
Yes.
Councilmember Robuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Preston?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Rambo?
Yes.
Councilmember Bockard?
Yes.
Councilmember Kranz?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanek?
Yes.
Councilmember Albers?
Yeah.
Councilmember Galani?
Yes.
Bills pass. Uh, now we'll move on to Bill three zero one zero. Uh, city administration, city administrator like to add?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this was just a quick note, looking at the online agenda, there was supposed to be an amended version of Bill three zero one zero A, but I am looking at it and not seeing an attachment with the actual bill itself. Um, that said, the department, without that, unless we get confirmation from the council that they received it in hardback form, uh, would request postponement until November. Bill three zero one zero A, and it has the attachments? It's got, well, it's got an attachment, but it doesn't have the, it only has the bill. It doesn't read the, doesn't have the supporting documentation with it. You seeing that? Okay.
All right, so, uh, therefore the city administrator, do you like to request a postponement to the next meeting?
Would like to request a postponement to the next meeting, which we have here. We'll actually bring it up at the next, uh, the one here we have in October, and we'll send out an email tonight with that attachment.
Your motion, okay, made by Councilmember Dodwell, is there a second for the postponement? Made by Councilmember Nian. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, then that bill is postponed to the next meeting. We'll move on to new business. Uh, so, uh, we'll proceed with Bill three zero one two before the council for first reading. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Galani, is there a second? Made by Councilmember Dodwell. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstain?
No.
We have two opposed?
Opposed.
And, uh, was it, is there a third?
Supposed.
Okay, so we have three opposed. Okay, so let's, let's do a roll call vote since we have a few here, uh, if you can, Colleen.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Nian? Councilmember Ottenberg?
No.
Councilmember Tradier?
Yes.
Councilmember Mabry?
No.
Councilmember Robuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Preston?
Yes.
Can we save that?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Rambo? Councilmember Bockard? Councilmember Kranz? Councilmember Vanek? Councilmember Albers? Councilmember Galani?
Okay, so, yeah. The motion passes, so we have the bill before the floor here. Go ahead, uh, yes, please go ahead and read the first reading.
Bill three zero one two, an ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, approving a lot split plat for the division of a five-point-eight-six acre tract of land into two lots located on the west side of Strecker Road at its intersection with Highland Summit Drive, with such being a part of Section nineteen, Township forty-five North, Range four East, and to be hereafter known as a lot split plat for eight fifteen Strecker Road.
Thank you. Director Vunich, you extend anything?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, before you tonight, on the wall behind you and on the screen is the proposed lot split plat. The intent is to subdivide the parent parcel of ground, which is six acres in size, into two lots. The two lots will be two-point-eight-six acres in size and three acres. There is a dedication of a land area for future right-of-way purposes, that's shown in the darker color along Strecker Road. The dedication of land area actually reduces the overall lot size to five-point-eight-six acres, as referenced in the bill's title. An easement has been proposed to provide access to the new three-acre lot. That easement was reviewed by the city attorney and the Department of Planning, found it acceptable under the requirements of the subdivision and development regulations. The easement must be perpetual, and it cannot be changed, vacated, or altered without action by the city of Wildwood, i.e. the city council. There any questions regarding the lot split plat? Department'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, so this time we'll entertain and get any questions, and as a reminder, debate is reserved for the second- debate is reserved for the second reading of the bill. So this is for information only. Councilmember Farmer, I see your hand up. Is that regarding this?
Yeah, so I don't have a problem with the house being built, but I do have some concerns, as the residents have noted, about the access point to it and kind of tacking on a house onto a subdivision, basically, without them being a member or however. So, you know, before I was a council member, I was a trustee of my subdivision. So I know that a lot of times that it takes a lot of effort to get some people moving in one direction or the other. So I, I would encourage the parties to continue to try to work this out because it doesn't, it just seems weird to me to stick this house into the back of a neighborhood and then not have them be a member of it. It seems strange.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kranz and then Councilmember Rambo.
Couple of questions, legal questions. Does the city have a right to, I guess, supersede the covenants of the homeowners?
City's actions are simply driven by the city code and has no relation to the indentures of any subdivision, nor can the city enforce the indentures of a subdivision.
Read that by me again. I did not understand any of that.
The short answer is the, the city has to enforce its ordinances irrespective of subdivision indentures.
So what's the ordinance here that says we can do it?
The city subdivision code.
To me, that doesn't seem fair.
It's, it's what the law is.
What about compensation for the easement?
That's between the property owners.
What if they refuse to compensate for the easement?
Compensate who? I'm sorry.
The homeowners. They own the easement, right?
No, sir.
Oh, I was under the impression that that easement was owned by the homeowners.
It's a private property.
It's a single homeowner on private property.
Well, who owns it? Who owns the easement? The, the developed, the person that's going to develop the property?
The, the lot one of the plant would be the, I'm going to use some legal terminology. There's dominant and servient tenement, tenements? But the idea is that there is a property owner of the lot over which the easement traverses. That is a single lot owner that owns that lot. And it is to the benefit of the owner of lot one.
Does that lot owner want that easement used for that purpose?
They signed an easement that granted it.
Okay.
So that was purely voluntary on their part.
So legally, what right do the, do the homeowners have to oppose this legally?
I, I can't speak to the homeowners' rights. I don't know. I, I.
But you're saying the city legally can approve this?
If it meets all the requirements of the subdivision code, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And maybe one additional item, because I had a similar question. The road is a public road, so that is maintained by the city and paid for by the city. Okay, so I had a second hand up. Councilmember Rambo.
Yeah, I voted yes for first reading specifically because a lot of folks took time to come here. And first reading, nothing really happens except we get our questions answered. And I had some questions. This is a, this is a tough one. If you, if you provide access directly to Strecker, you have to bulldoze hundreds of feet of trees in a sensitive area just to get there. And then you have a house exiting directly on Strecker. But, and that, you know, that impacts the views of the people that are driving down Strecker, et cetera. But the, the larger question really to me is whether that's a public road or a private HOA maintained road. And I can't get a clear answer to that because I've been told, I've been told both. And if it's a private road owned by the HOA, this person, it just seems like it would be mandatory for this person to pay whatever is required to help maintain the road and to put a, some sort of a deposit down in it, you know, for, for damage in construction and so forth, for the inconvenience that these folks would have to suffer while the construction's going on. So my basic question is that, what's the status of this road? And has there been any discussion about the, the owner of the new lot joining the HOA?
Highland Summit Drive is a public street. It is maintaining, maintained by the city of Wildwood.
Okay.
Prior to Wildwood, it was a county street and maintained by St. Louis County.
Okay, that answers a lot. Yeah, that's all I have this time. Thank you.
We have any other questions at this time? Councilmember Galani?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, and I appreciate, I know there's two sides to this whole thing, and it affects different people on either side of it. I also know that the resident who purchased that six acre tract that's trying to be split bought it with that intention of doing so and had discussed that with the city upfront. And so I, I know, and to your point, Councilmember Rambo, to my understanding, the ability to go to Strecker with an easement through the existing homeowner's lot was something that was on the table, but because of the extensive removal of trees and tree preservation and watershed with Cox Creek right there, it was recommended not to. So, you know, I don't think this is just about money or, or saving or path of least resistance per se. But the other thing is that, to my understanding, that this went, started in June, and so it's been going on throughout the entirety of the summer. I know there was already a one-month delay for the property owner in the public hearing, specifically because of a fifteen-day rule that was imposed by the previous mayor on P and Z approvals before they would go to council for a public hearing. And there was a technicality of a few days, which forced the entire thing to sit on hold for a whole other month, strictly because of that. I just wanted to clarify that that is in fact true, because that's what my understanding was. So this has gone on. There has been a process. It has been out there for some time with all the cars on the table. And the other thing I wanted to clarify is that at the last meeting, the council unanimously approved the rezoning of this property for the specific purpose of approving this lot split. So this isn't something like, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around how this is becoming a new debate all of a sudden tonight. And I appreciate all the homeowners that are here and your concerns, and I want to see those addressed and the process and all of those things I'm all about. But from a legal perspective, it's my understanding that the city has no ability or purview to assist or enforce the enforcing of any indentures of any HOA. So my understanding is that the current homeowner has already granted that easement. The easement's been recorded with the county as a deed. And the homeowners met all the other requirements associated with the city and the ordinances and the code. We've had a public hearing. The council unanimously approved the rezoning of that particular property for the sole purpose of approving the lot split. All of this has already happened. And the only contingencies that remain was the fact that the lot split had to be split into only one other lot, which it is. And only one additional single-family home could be built on that lot, which is what's taking place. And, and that the easement had to be granted and recorded in order for this lot split to be approved. All of that has happened. So I guess, you know, there might have been some lack of, of information flow on the, on the neighborhood side. But this isn't something that the city's ramming through or slamming on in the last minute or anything like that. And I guess the biggest question I have is if we, you know, in a normal environment, we would do a first and second reading in the same night and pass it when we're at this stage as the administrative state of the process. If we were to not do the second reading tonight and wait until November, what exactly does that solve? Because it doesn't change anything from the city's perspective. If the homeowners and the trustees and the, and everybody has a meeting to discuss how they want to approach this, to my understanding, at this point, the only recourse that would be there would be if the homeowners association did in fact believe that the homeowner that granted the easement violated the indentures, which may be the, well, and that may be the case, but my point is that if that is in fact the position that the trustees and the HOA takes, the only legal recourse at that point would be between the HOA and that individual homeowner. It would have absolutely nothing to do with the city. So whether we vote to approve this lot split tonight or in November doesn't at all change whatever the potential recourse or not. You know, I'm not giving legal advice by any means. I'm just saying the lot split is just us saying that the homeowner has met all of the code and guidelines required by our city in order to split this lot. And so all of those things have happened and taken place. If, whether we voted on it tonight or in November doesn't really change anything that can or will happen. If, to the city attorney, and city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but anything outside of that would be between the HOA and the homeowner in question that, that granted the easement. And it would have absolutely nothing to do with the city. And whatever action we take on the slot split legislation in front of us has no impact on that either. It's strictly us saying that the homeowner has met all the requirements that we've imposed on them and that the guidelines and the code of the city. So I just wanted to clarify that to make sure that the lines weren't blurred and that this isn't like, hey, by us approving this, we're saying that the homeowners are stuck and can't do anything, and this is a hundred percent done or whatever it is. It's just from the city's perspective, from a code and guideline perspective that we are approving it because it meets everything. So am I wrong in any of that? Or, you know, because there's two sides to this. And this resident already has had significant delays in being able to simply split a lot and, and has been very workable with us at the department and has suffered those delays. And all they're trying to do is split a six acre lot into two, three acre lots. We're not trying to do some massive development or reinvent the wheel. Thanks.
All right. Again, just in first reading, for information only. Councilmember Ottenberg and then Councilmember Dodwell. Did I miss anyone on this side here? Okay, we'll come back to you here.
All right. So I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. First of all, for all the residents that are here from the Highland Summit subdivision, this is only the first reading tonight. This is not the final vote on this piece of the legislation. So I just wanted to clarify that upfront. And the reason so many of the residents are here is because, unfortunately, because of communication channels that maybe didn't work as effectively as they should have. They want to get their arms around what's happening in their own backyard. And that's the reason why they are looking forward to this delay. And basically, they're going to get it because this is only the first reading and we're not having a second reading tonight. So that gives you the opportunity to have that subdivision meeting, get everybody on the same page, to dispel any misinformation that might be out there, and to have your meeting and to have the opportunity to discuss, you know, the positives and negatives of this possible home being built on this piece of property. To answer the, I think, to clarify topic that Councilmember Kranz brought up, which I appreciate. And that is that, yeah, the city does not get involved with enforcing subdivision indentures. But this opportunity that they will have to get together as a subdivision, they can review their indentures at length and understand exactly what their options are in terms of enforcement or not enforcement of indentures. So that's what this opportunity gives them when they have this subdivision meeting. And to address something that Councilmember Galani brought up, which I appreciate, you are correct in that at last month's meeting, we unanimously approved the lot split. And that was based in part on testimony of an individual that was at the microphone from the Highland Summit subdivision. Had we known that there was so much uncertainty out there on the part of those, of some of the other residents, we would not have voted to approve that lot split. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Dodwell?
Councilmember Ottenberg said some of the things that I was going to say. So thank you very much, Councilmember. The other thing that I wanted to point out is we had individuals here thirty days ago. They were able to make comments. I'm hearing tonight that members of the subdivision didn't really hear about any of this until last week, which begs the question, Highland Summit needs to get some communication improvements in how they let their individuals in their subdivision know what's going on. Number two, I'm going to make a motion that we continue ahead with the process. And in thirty days, this comes back for a second reading and that the subdivision gets together during that timeframe and identifies what concerns they have and that the homeowner for this three acre property meet with them as well, or representatives from that group, so that they can iron out any instances of issues that they may have. But as Councilmember Galani said, this is not a city issue between the city and the trustees. It's up to the trustees.
Okay, we're going to come back. I think we may not need a motion necessarily for your request, but we'll come back to you. I think I had two more folks that wanted to speak on this side. Councilmember Kranz and Rambo, do you have any other follow-ups?
I, I'm fine.
Okay. Councilmember Ranc?
Yeah, another quick question. If, if this is a public road, then does the homeowners association just like regulate chickens and those kinds of things? Or is there some common ground in this subdivision? I, I'm trying to understand what the objection is to the, to the, the new lot joining the HOA, you know, what the resistance is and what the advantages would be and so forth. Can you, Joe, do you know that? I know it's not something that we should necessarily be concerned with up here, but, but I am. It's a fairness question to me.
Well, Dr. Rambo, during the zoning process, the representatives of Highland Summit mentioned that they obviously pay for street lighting. The city does not.
Okay.
The street lights are in the public right-of-way, but it's a process. We only pay for street lighting in town center. Also, they've installed security cameras to provide elevated protection of their homes and families. That's not something the city requires. And then at the entryway, there is signage that's been installed that identifies the subdivision itself. So there are some amenities in the public right-of-way, so to speak, that the city requires in some instances, not all. And the homeowners association pays the fees for those.
So the dues, I would assume are minimal, it sounds like to me, a few hundred dollars a year or something like that?
I, I don't know the amount, but I will tell you that insurance for the common ground also plays in all of this. And there is common ground associated with this subdivision quite a bit. Insurance rates rise, but I, that's a question for one of the trustees, not me.
Okay, sure, sure. And so, but this person has been asked to join the HOA and has expressed reluctance. Is that a fair way to look at it or?
I can only go on what the attorney representing the property owner has advised. I think that typically, typically, the biggest concern is many of the indentures that were approved by St. Louis County have architectural review requirements. And so if the property owner were to join the subdivision, the subdivision's architectural review committee could review the dwelling prior to construction. And that may be a concern. I don't know.
Okay, final, final question. Is, what does the county do to ensure that the other folks on this road don't have to drive through gravel falling off the dump trucks, dirt falling off the dump trucks, construction rubble, contractors parking in the middle of the road because they have to offload things and so forth? Is there any way we can enhance what the county does if it's a public street?
Not county, city.
The city. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You said it was formerly county, but now it's city.
City. And that responsibility falls on the departments of planning and public works. The grading code has components relative to off-street parking for employees. It's supposed to be rock. There's supposed to be a washdown area. I will tell you, we do the best we can to put all the ingredients in place to ensure that even in the worst of weather, the amount of dirt, rock that gets out onto the public street is minimized. The property owner, the builder, they may have great intentions, but that doesn't speak to the subdivision.
I've seen it happen. That's why I'm asking, you know, if we can enhance that, that would probably, you know, help these people.
Oftentimes, by the, by the time we receive a call, a complaint, or arrive at the site, some of the offenders are gone.
Yep.
And so the directions the department's given to our code team now is stop work.
Okay.
That's the most effective tool we have now.
Okay.
The court system takes too long for most people, including myself. So stop work, send the trades home. That gets everybody's attention.
Hopefully, that's a bit reassuring to the folks here. So thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Nian?
Just two quick things along with what Mr. Rambo just said. I believe at the last meeting, the person that spoke did mention the developer had agreed to try to keep as much of the construction equipment up off of the road and on the property. I think I'm remembering that correctly. And my other question is, is this a situation where the surrounding neighbors received a mailer that this was? received a mail alert that this was happening?
Yes, Mr. Newberry and Don Willenbrook, who is our administrative assistant, they're responsible to get the mailings out. We do a mailing for the public hearing at Planning and Zoning Commission, 3,000 feet from the properties, over a half mile. And we did the same for the public hearing at city council. And the information report. So we did three mailings to everyone that resides within 3,000 feet.
Yeah, and and I was just going to make a final comment too because I sat through the planning and zoning meetings. Because we did have some folks from the subdivision that attended planning and zoning and the mailing, as Director Vunich stated, goes out to 3,000 feet. I believe the state only requires a few hundred feet, I believe.
I think it's 185 or something.
So we significantly exceed what the state requires when it comes to notifying residents. 180 something feet required by the state, we do 3,000 feet. So we did have some folks attend that. But I too, I'm hopeful, based on what Councilmember Doddwell asked, that there would be continued discussions because I kind of got the impression during the process that we had gotten or the HOA and the builder and representatives had gotten to a point where they were talking. And we got that, you know, from the messaging that was brought up from the folks that were here at the meeting. So that's always been important for me to make sure that that, those conversations are happening. So we have a second reading, which is again, normal for us to have it in the next month. So we we hope that we will get an update at that meeting that these discussions have taken place and that everyone is in agreement. So first reading is concluded for tonight. So don't see any other discussions. We'll move forward. We do have three more bills under new business. And if there's no objection, I'd like to request every read these en masse, Bill 3013 and Bill 3014 and Bill 3015. Is there any objection to reading these en masse?
Okay, so can I get a motion for the first reading of these bills made by Councilmember Marshall? Is there a second made by Councilmember Doddwell? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose or abstain? Okay, Colleen, please read bills.
Bill 3013, an ordinance by the city council of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, approving a boundary adjustment plat for lots one and two of Grover Heights, Lot 7A, lot split plat, Book 372, Page 375, and the same being part of Section 12 Township 44 North, Range 3 East, and more specifically located on the southwest corner of Manchester Road, Historic Route 66 and East Avenue, and now hereafter known as the Boundary Adjustment Plat for lots one and two of Grover Heights, Lot 7A, Lot Split Plat. Bill 3014, an ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor of the city of Wildwood, Missouri to execute a contract with Ideal Landscape Group for the development of design and engineered plans and specifications in association with the development of Village Green Phase Two, an all-inclusive playground for children of all ages and abilities. Bill 3015, an ordinance by the city council of the city of Wildwood, authorizing the mayor of the city of Wildwood to execute the attached deed, exhibit and associated documentation, which will thereby grant a 10 foot wide sole purpose utility easement for underground electric onto public property and adjoining right of way to the Union Electric Company, doing business as Ameren, Missouri, which will be situated at the terminus of Main Street, thereby accommodating new service to the city's Village Green.
All right, Director Vunich, do you wish to add anything in addition to what's already been provided?
Roll it to Bill 3013. This is about the third or fourth plat that's been submitted on it. So if you've been around for a while, you've probably seen it split, consolidated, split, and now adjusted. So it's quite a story. In terms of Bill 3014, this is the next step in the process for the all-inclusive playground. Recently, the city council authorized the payment of half the cost for the playground equipment in association with the all-inclusive playground. This begins the process of designing engineering playground itself. And then finally, as you know, we've been working very hard to address the undergrounding of the utility lines. We went from a duck bank that was over $200,000 to a switchgear. That was approximately $100,000. An easement is necessary to underground for the undergrounded electrical lines that once were overhead. None of these require two readings tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Vunich. Any questions? Councilmember Marshall.
Mr. Vunich, on the fourth time for that 13 or 3013, any dedication of any or refunds for East Avenue? I mean, we always seen, we moved through on that and the street keeps getting narrower and narrower. Is it going to be corrected?
One of the previous subdivision actions did obtain the dedication of additional right of way. And the intent is to have the developer, in this case, Blue Onyx, which is a local company, install the improvements as part of the first lot. Having an escrow and waiting, it's not necessary here in the opinion of the department. And I believe Mr. Brown, our director of public works, would concur. Between Cherry Hill Square, the former Rough Guard fee store, and then Bordeaux, that's one and two. They almost have all of East Avenue with at least a drivable surface, herbs and sidewalks. This is missing. It's time to do it. Don't wait.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, these will be back next month for a second reading. Moving on, we have no first readings. We're hearing some favorable city recommendation, resolutions are part of consent agenda. So now we have the consent agenda. If there's no objection to the consent agenda, can I get a motion? Wait, we have. Okay, which Resolution 2025 dash 24? All right, the city administrator has requested that we withdraw that resolution from the consent agenda. City administrator, do you wish to explain why or?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to make a quick note that there is monetary consideration included with this. Oh, thank you. I just wanted to mention real quickly that this this is a resolution that is getting the city to be involved in a grant application, which it actually is a beautiful site. There is, you know, the ability to be able to put a path in there, parking lot. That said, in 2027, this would tie the city down to about, it was about $200,000. So I just want to bring up the monetary consideration.
The commitment or the endorsement of the application would be the city would pay half of the anticipated cost of improvements, the other half being paid by the grant. The total would be $180,000. City council authorized the preparation of the resolution. I was lax in getting it done. And so that's the reason you're seeing it in its revised form at your desk tonight. I would note that the key element in the motion to authorize the preparation of the resolution was that it be not tied to a specific year, 2027, but 2027 or 2028, depending on the city's financial circumstances. And so the new resolution reflects that flexibility. And in this case, given the tardiness on the part of the director of the department, postponement would probably be justified so you have enough time to review it.
Okay, so we'll come back to this and just request postponement of the resolution. So at this point right now, we'll take that out of the consent agenda. So all the other remaining items will be part of the consent agenda, except for the resolution. Can I get a motion for first reading of the consent agenda made by Councilmember Bockert, seconded by Councilmember Crans? Yes, thank you. Approval of the consent agenda for clarification. So thank you for that. So we have a motion on the floor made by Councilmember Bockert, seconded by Councilmember Crans. And all those in favor, please say aye.
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 You want to oppose or abstain? Okay, so with that, can we get a motion if you would like to entertain that postponement of Resolution 2025 dash 24 for the next meeting? Made by Councilmember Vanek, seconded by Councilmember Crans. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? All right, the resolution is postponed to the next meeting. Now we're in the miscellaneous. Are there any comments in the miscellaneous? I I'll just make a comment here, and this is regarding the dear topic that was brought up. First, I commend you for your passion. You know, I think you came up and spoke very professionally and we greatly appreciate it. I've heard things tonight that I think are worth considering or looking into. You know, I saw our city administrator writing down that survey website. And as the city administrator said, this is a topic that is going to be discussed in Admin Public Works Committee, which is a subset of the council that is held tomorrow. And I believe there was one additional meeting. So I know that this has been a topic that's been discussed for as long as I've been on council for the last 10 years through various committees. It was in Board of Public Safety at one time, and I think it went to Admin Public Works. And I feel like, we haven't even a committee dedicated to that?
Yeah, we had a dear management committee.
Dear management committee. So it's it's been something that's been going through the works for years. And I know they've tried to enter, you know, have open meetings. Well, they do have open meetings, but they've had open houses. So it's never too late to consider some fresh ideas. And so appreciate again you coming tonight and engaging with the council. So hopefully we continue this dialogue here. All right, that's all I have for miscellaneous. Anything else? All right, can we get a motion for adjournment of the meeting? Made by Councilmember Ottenberg, second. Who would like the second? Was that Councilmember Nian? Second, yep. All right, so we have a motion for adjournment. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.